Good evening and welcome to the January 28, 2019 Council Work Session. The first item is Committee Reports and Items of Interest, and we do have an opportunity here directly from the police auditor, but if anyone else has things they wish to share first, yep, Greg, go for it.
So, last week I was in Washington DC for the National League of Cities Housing Task Force, and the beginning of those talks, there's 18 of us in the room, and we are talking about housing supply, land supply, the difference between income and the cost of housing, and we're starting to talk about some specific strategies, we're trying to narrow things down into five or six item bucket to be able to affect federal housing policy. So, when we meet again via phone this month, we're going to start really kind of narrowing down what our focus is going to be on. Homelessness was another topic that is big on everybody's agenda. We are not alone, I can tell you that, for that regard. And then, the League of Oregon Cities had City Day in Salem on Thursday, and I met with the governor. We also heard from the Speaker, the Senate President, the minority leader in both houses, and legislative session is ready to get off and going. So, you know, we're focusing on the issues that we're on top of our list, which again is housing, you know, tax reform, property tax reform, which doesn't seem to be on the agenda of the legislature right now, but hopefully that'll pop up on their radar screen, because it's something that is important for all cities. And, I say, housing, tax reform, and local preemption, and specifically around some of the proposals that are beginning to emerge from the legislature right now. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, Mayor.
Well, thank you for all of that, all the travel and networking. So, Jennifer?
Thank you. I had a couple of committee reports. Metropolitan wastewater management, as you guys probably know, they own a poplar tree farm. They took some of that poplar, and it was milled locally at Urban Lumber, and then Ninewood, which is another local company, created lighting grills, and they were just installed, they're in the Springfield Public Library meeting room, so if you're ever over at the library, you should go in there and check them out, they're really cool. They kind of look like this, only they're each individual lighting cover has, it's hard to explain, but they're really cool, and it was all done locally by the trees that were also grown locally, so they're pretty cool. They're also going to be having a community survey coming out, and I'll let everyone know when that happens, so folks can log in and do that. The Envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee, more easily known as ETAC, our next meeting is on February 7th, 5:30, at the third floor atrium meeting room, and we are discussing urban reserves, so if that's something that interests folks, they should stop by. And then I wanted to let people know that the next police commission meeting is being moved, because it falls on Valentine's Day, so don't come on Valentine's Day, come on the 12th, February 12th, Tuesday, same time, 5:30, at the EPD Headquarters and Country Club Road.
That's great, thank you. Anybody else need a moment? Okay, yes, Betty?
Some things consist, people have been talking to me about, a lot of people about 5G, you've all heard of that, and I hope we will learn more about that when we meet with E-Web soon. People are very concerned about, well, I'm repaving, about, they think we should be doing undergrounding the utilities at the same time, and I know that costs a lot of money, but I think it would be a better use of money than the quiet zone, actually, but it does make sense to do it while you're doing the paving. And, not everybody, but a lot of people are unhappy with what's happened to East Amazon Drive, because people who live there have lost their parking, parking is a big thing, and it's so narrow that it's, some people say it's hard for them to turn out from their streets onto East Amazon now, that there's the two-way bike lane, which has taken up a lot of the street, and they ask me if it's reversible, and I don't know, and I don't know whether it should be, and I don't know whether it can be, but it is hard on people, those are modest houses along there, and they aren't well-to-do people, and they now don't have a place to park their second car, or a place for guests to park. And, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think we are ready to hear, just an opportunity to get a briefing from a police auditor on the next steps in the process of reviewing an officer-involved shooting, so thank you very much.
Good evening. I was told five minutes, but if you have questions, you might have a little bit more time, so I'm not sure. No better place to be on my birthday than...
Happy Birthday!
I thought I could go first, but no, I didn't. So, we know on, obviously on January 11th, there was an officer-involved shooting at Cascades Middle School, certainly want to offer condolences to everyone involved, I know it's been a very tough situation. I was out of town at the time, so Leah did the heavy lifting on responding to the scene as we're required to do on critical incidents, and got her snapshots in her mind about what happened. So, what happens on our, as you have in your handouts, if you want to flip the next thing, is, and I know, because these are rare, thankfully, sometimes people forget how the process works, so we want to make sure people understand the process. What has occurred is the district attorney has completed a criminal investigation based on what was provided to her by the inter-agency deadly force investigation team, which is detectives and officers from several agencies within Lane County, and usually directed by someone from the Oregon State Patrol. She receives that investigation, and she issues a ruling about whether or not the officers committed any crimes, it was a criminal investigation. At the conclusion of her report, and she does have the option of taking it to the grand jury, she did not take it to the grand jury, she got the report and made the decision that it was, there was no criminal violations. From that point, the file is given to internal investigations, I don't think they have it yet, I'm certain it's voluminous, and then they conduct an administrative investigation to determine whether the officers committed any Eugene Police Department policy violations, and we monitor that investigation. Historically, we've done, Internal Affairs has done little additional investigation, because all that information is, was compiled by ITFIT. At times, we've interviewed the officers, but that's been about the extent, because we don't have the authority to redo forensics investigations, those kinds of things. So, when they get that file, and we monitor, and then we decide, the next step after that investigation is completed, the chief of police creates what's called a Use of Force Review Board, for the purpose of determining whether or not the actions of the employees were consistent with department policies. The Use of Force Review Board consists of the supervisor of the officers, typically the training lieutenant, or sergeant, and another, the, what other sergeant?
Defensive tactics.
Defensive tactics sergeant, and at least one other lieutenant. We're also involved on that board as non-voting members, and then, in addition to that, the chief may have someone from the outside, so for example, in the shooting of Mr. Bab, there was a PTSD expert who was also a panelist in that particular Use of Force Review Board. Within 30 days after the determination by the board as to whether policies were followed, the Use of Force Review Board chairperson then completes a report and recommendations. We, in the past, have at these review boards, have offered our input as well, we're not, even though we don't vote, we're certainly not silent members, for those that know me, they know that I have had a lot of experience in investigating officer-involved shootings, Leah's had several cases now as well, so we do have the experience to be participants in those boards. The chief then makes the final determination regarding compliance with policy, training, issues, and tactics. We also may provide recommendations to the chief. The civilian review board can have two roles. They may choose to review the completed case file at a regularly scheduled meeting, they've done that in the past on their, at their meetings, excuse me. They review the quality of the investigation within EPD, quality of the work of the auditor's office within, again, the confines of the administrative investigation, training or policy recommendations, and the final adjudications, decisions whether the officers have violated EPD policies. It's not within the scope of the ordinance for them to make comments about the interdepartmental investigation, it doesn't restrict them, but that's not typically, or that's not within their responsibilities within the ordinance. So, again, they can make comments about it, but that's a different lane that they can go down if they wish to. One of the things that came out during this investigation, at least by representatives of the family, was the potential for a community impact case, and so I wanted to explain that briefly as well. They are investigations involving sworn police personnel that alleges excessive force, bias, disparate treatment of violation, or violation of constitutional rights, which the auditor determined shall be reviewed by the civilian review board as a community impact case. If that is the path taken, and again, I haven't seen the file yet, if selected by the auditor, the civilian review board will review a summary of the complaint and investigation, and may decide whether they will accept it as a community impact case by majority vote. So I would have to make the recommendation, they would vote on it. If so, chief employees and complaints are notified. Again, during the investigation process, we monitor and review the investigation, the shift is, then, if it's not a community impact case, the issue, the chief issues a final adjudication, and the review board reviews the closed investigation. If it's a community impact case, upon completion of the investigation and preliminary adjudication decision by the chief, the auditor will provide the investigation to the civilian review board for review. Within 14 days of receiving the case, the review board will meet to discuss and present its determinations on the case, including whether they agree with the chief's preliminary adjudication decision. Within, and then within 30 days, the review board will do one or more of the following, they can concur with the EPD adjudication, develop recommendations on handling of the complaint and investigation, and/or identify policy or procedural issues, again, because this was an ITFIT investigation and not an EPD investigation, there are limitations to that, or it can require the city to reopen the administrative investigation if it finds either the investigation was incomplete or inadequate, and the CRB has reasonable belief to believe that additional investigation is likely to reveal facts that could affect the case outcome, or adjudication reach is not supported by substantial evidence. If the board voted to reopen a community impact case, the auditor shall inform the CRB of the subsequent investigation conducted and the final adjudication decision. Now, loop back, again, to what I said earlier, in terms of whether the investigation was incomplete or inadequate, that was an ITFIT investigation, so there's very limited participation by the Eugene Police Department in this type of investigation, and therefore, the input of the civilian review board within the authority would be very limited, although it's certainly not restricted by any comments that they might have. So, in essence, the community impact, a typical community impact case has more civilian review board review of the investigation prior to the chief's final decision, and also then can make recommendations to the chief prior to his final decision. So, that's sort of a brief overview of it, and so that's where we are in terms of decision-making. As I said, we haven't got the case file yet, I assume it'll be a few more weeks before we get to see the case file, and since Leah went to the scene and did most of the heavy lifting, she'll be on the Use of Force Review Board, she served on that several times on some other cases that we've had, so I'm not concerned about her ability to serve in that capacity, she does it very well. So, does anybody have any questions? It went kind of fast, but...
Questions? Questions?
What do you look for when you decide whether something's a community impact case? I mean, besides the first sentence?
It's sort of, I suppose, and it's pretty rare, but, just community impact, I think if there's, for example, a demonstration in which there's a lot of interaction, both physical and verbal, with police, for example, and it's an important issue, in other words, something that doesn't go well under those circumstances, as it says, excessive force that seemed egregious at the time, or disparate treatment. Tim Lowey, who used to be the chair of our review board, he used to say, "You know it when you see it," and really, that's about the best explanation I can get, because I can't predict future behavior by the police, or any interactions they might have with the community.
Thanks. Alan, I know you're calling in, do you have any questions? Probably not. I have a question that's...
No, I don't, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a community, we've had, I think, since the ordinance, two or three community impact?
One.
One? Hmm. So that was the, in, it was the tasing downtown?
Yes.
I thought the Chinese student that was...
No.
Huh. Okay. In both those instances, though, those were questions of use of taser rather than deadly And one of them, as mentioned, was, would you, I don't know how to ask this question, it seems to me that this almost rises to that level, it's not, obviously, it's not my determination to make. Do you have any preliminary thoughts on that?
That's why I see the file. Again, this is, this was not an in-house investigation.
It wasn't, what, I'm sorry?
It was not an in-house investigation.
Right.
It was an external investigation, in which EPD had one person inserted to sort of oversee things.
Right.
So, in terms of the oversight of the investigation itself, from, they would have limited authority over that, they're certainly entitled to opinions about it, how the other agencies might have done an investigation, but it's not part of their defined responsibilities per ordinance.
I'm not an expert in this sort of work at all, but it seems to me that the clearer, and that's a loaded way to say that, but the clearer the body cam video, for example, of any particular instance, the less likely that there could be questions about facts of an incident. Do you think that having body cam worn now by officers leads to more or less community impact type cases? Do you think this is more or less likely to be one based on the video?
I know that the body-worn cameras have been extraordinarily helpful in making decisions for us. They take more time when we get someone filing a complaint, because I feel an obligation to not push forward an investigation until I've watched the film...
Yeah.
...and put employees in a situation where they're being investigated, even though there's film that determines whether or not they should be. On the other hand, at times, we've also found things in, because of body-worn cameras, in which that has led to an investigation, so they've been very helpful. Would they more, cause more or fewer community impact cases?
It seems to me, if I could just interrupt, that community impact, designating a case such, is designed in order for us to take a, to take a magnifying glass to it, because it has such relevance to large numbers of people in the community, to amplify and clarify the results, but it seems to me that video seems to do that, too.
When we, you, they'll see a more complete video, because there's some extraordinarily graphic parts that didn't make the editing. The other choice that the review board can have is, they may also, per the ordinance, the civilian review board may provide a forum to gather community concerns about incident-specific police actions, and may receive and forward complaint information to the auditor's office for processing. I can't even remember, quite honestly, when they passed that bill in the Oregon Legislature, if that occurred before or after the, after council had established a community impact case, I know I have it in my paperwork here somewhere. So, those are those two options, but when we, I think, envisioned a community impact case, it was a case in which Eugene Police Department did the entire investigation, and was not only part of the incident, but did the entire investigation.
I see.
So, I wish I knew exactly when, I know it's in the stack somewhere.
My memory, and I could be wrong, the Senate bill was passed in 2007, and I believe the original version of the ordinance was 2007.
Yeah, okay, so that, and that makes sense, so, the design by city council with recommendations from the police commission might have been somewhat different on the community impact case, by the same token, how ITFIT ended up being designed, because there's, each county has some leeway in how they can design their use of deadly force processes, so, for example, Deschutes County is different than how Lane County is, so, I have the revised addition, okay, January 2nd, 2007, approved by the planning authority, so actually, the legislation was probably before that, but at any case, it was probably almost on the same timeframe as the council ordinance for the auditor's office and the review board in community impact cases.
Thank you very much.
Alan, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mark. There's been a lot of comment in the community about the speed at which this, all this information came out, and I know these things take time, and I wonder if you could comment on that, and whether or not it was disproportionately long, or...
I thought it was, I thought their pace, it was a good pace, I thought, because there are certain lab requirements, and forensic requirements, and ballistics requirements that I think in the past haven't been done fully, so I know the community wants quick answers. Ultimately, there's that decision about whether to release, for example, the body camera footage, I know some jurisdictions have a very short timeframe, I know that we learned our lessons in Cincinnati, in which it was probably a day or two where the footage would be released, so that the community could understand. I also appreciate the district attorney's feelings that she didn't want to release the video until all the witnesses were interviewed, and I think that that's a byproduct of how the ITFIT is composed, whereas in Cincinnati, where everything was investigated in-house by the homicide division, you usually got to talk to the witnesses within hours after the event occurred. Here, you don't normally get to talk to the witnesses within hours after the event occurred, so that stretches it out. So for me, quite honestly, the longer the medical examiner has the body and is doing their exams, and the longer the lab and the ballistics is out, that leads me to believe, and leads me to be hopeful that those things were done in a very thorough manner, but again, until I see the file, I won't be able to know for sure.
Yeah, specifically the body cam video, if it were released earlier, there's, there were a lot of people that jumped to conclusions about this, people came... People came to city council and were saying things as if they were there that were absolutely not true. And if that process could be speeded up so that the video, body cam video could be, as you said, in some jurisdictions, a matter of days instead of two weeks almost, I think that would be very helpful in a lot of incidences, especially in this one, it would have been.
In Cincinnati, we started doing it the next morning after we had the type of unrest that we had as a result of that. I know Chicago, boy, I want to say six days. Some jurisdictions under consent decrees are very short timeframe in which there's turnover for that. But again, their processes are different in terms of how and when they can talk to witnesses and things like that, so.
So if we wanted to pursue that and have that come out a little earlier, how would we go about doing that? I know it's an agency investigation and the district attorney, none of which are in the city of Eugene, so we don't have control over a lot of this. Any ideas?
The district attorney has control over all of this while it's a criminal investigation.
So that's the point of leverage with the district attorney. She decides what happens when.
Yes, until she's completed her criminal investigation and she's made a decision. She's in charge.
Okay, thank you very much. Everyone had their questions answered. I really appreciate your coming and giving us briefing. I think it's helpful for us to hear and for the public to be able to hear, so thank you very much for that.
My pleasure.
And thanks for your good work.
And we'll, you know, as soon as we get the file, we'll get moving on it and at any point in time, if you want updates or anything like that, we'll do the best we can. I'm sure Chief Skinner would be more than happy to do that as well. He was certainly engaged in this as much as he could be engaged as well, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, also, I will point out, we did have a report from the district attorney that was on email that I, that I, I read and reviewed this afternoon, and, you know, I'm pretty satisfied that that's, was a thorough review of the incident.
Okay, thank you. And we are now ready to move into our regular agenda. First item, municipal court presiding judge.
I have an additional handout if you can pass that around, please. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Carrie Beraldo. I'm the interim human resources director and here to provide support to you in the hiring process for the presiding judge. This is a follow-up to the council work session from January 9, in which you indicated an interest in hearing more about options for hiring the presiding judge as an employee, so I'm here to walk through those details. As a reminder, current code requires that we fill this position as an independent contractor, so I have provided you with a possible code amendment that you could consider if you would like to go ahead and pursue an employee judge. I did want to note for you that the possible code amendment would not preclude you from still hiring that position as a contractor. It would just give you an option to hire either way. If you do decide to fill this position as an employee, there are a couple ways in which we can do this, and so I'll walk through the details of both of those. The handouts that I gave you are an overview of what that process is, and then I also did include a letter that Wayne Allen had written and emailed out before his retirement that went out to you all in terms of his recommendation on that. So I wanted to make sure that if you hadn't seen that, that you all had that. So one method for going about filling this position could be a direct appointment. Typically, those are used when an employee has been serving in an interim capacity. The decision would be made based on a strong performance record. The employee would have knowledge and expertise that would make them the strongest choice, and there would be a likelihood that you would feel that they would be selected if there was a competitive process. So that is an option that you can use. It still require, will require some of the same steps that I'll go through when I go through this chart. However, it would be significantly faster because it would involve all of the steps. The second way we could go about it is a full competitive recruitment process, and so I'll walk through some of those steps with you as well. I would note that a competitive recruitment process probably will take three to four months to get through all the way from job posting through hire. So first step would be finalizing a job description and salary. If we did go with an employee position, this is a brand-new position to the city, so we would actually need to develop or finalize the job description. I did provide a draft job description in your packets. I would note that before his retirement, Wayne Allen did provide a good amount of feedback and input on that job description, so I was very happy to have his input into that. And then additionally, I did provide some preliminary information about salary. That's not necessarily something that we have to talk about today, but I wanted to put that in front of you all so you could have a good sense of what that could look like. I would note that even if we did a direct appoint or a competitive recruitment, finalizing that job description and salary would be needed for both of those processes. If we proceed with a competitive process, the next step is to develop a job posting. Just want to speak about the difference to those. Some of you probably know this, but a job description is very detailed about the duties that somebody would do. A job posting is really what I would call like your advertising or your marketing, where you could really speak to the organization, the community, some of the initiatives that we work on, folks that are within municipal court, some of the folks that they would get to work with. So it's really more of a brochure and advertising piece, and so we would want to draft up that before we enter into the recruitment. In addition, you would want to, likely may want to generate some supplemental questions. That's a good opportunity for you to have a firsthand look at their writing samples, and it's also used as an additional tool for screening throughout the process. We would want to develop an advertising strategy. I know on the 9th, I think I had shared with you, and it is in the draft job description, that this position would require that the candidates be an active member and in good standing with the Oregon State Bar. So it's likely if we were looking at advertising, we're probably not looking at a large national recruitment. It would probably be more focused, or advertising would be focused within Oregon. And I'm happy to provide recommendations of different agencies that we could be posting through, and you'd be looking at professional associations that are affiliated with the court. Lastly, we would, well, not lastly, there's a lot more steps. We would want to finalize a recruitment process schedule, and this details all the way through how long you would want to have the position posted for. Typically, for this level of position, you're looking at probably wanting to post it out for three to four weeks, where you're taking in applications during that period of time, and then all the way through your interview process, your screening, all of that, so you kind of have that laid out. So we move on to the next section where we talk about screening. So again, you'd have a posting period, you'd be collecting applications. The first step would be to have somebody review through those applications just to determine that someone has met the minimum qualifications, and again, that would be based on the job description that we have drafted. Additionally, you would then likely want to include, or you could include, subject matter experts to help you evaluate those applications. They would be doing some kind of rating on the application materials and supplemental questions if you did include those. And then top candidates are usually then identified for interview. So we jump down to the interview section. We would need to select interview panel members. It's likely for this level of position, you could want to develop several interview panels. This is where you could use, again, some subject matter experts. You might want to use folks from the DA office, public safety, some of the former judges, municipal court staff, as well as you all being involved in that process. We'd need to develop interview questions. Those, oftentimes, we will solicit out suggestions from our subject matter experts, as well as some of the folks that I just recently mentioned as well. We would conduct interviews and then gather feedback from panel members. I do think this position, it would be a great opportunity to include in that interview process a tour of community court. So if we could align it around a day or time that would work where that the candidates could go into community court, that would be a good aspect to include. And just to mention that if you are wanting to go with a direct appoint, you could also conduct an interview for a direct appoint, as well as, I know not all of you have had the opportunity to work with Judge Gill, so you could think about doing that before you wanted to decide if you wanted to go with a direct appoint option. Those three steps really encumber the major part of the three to four months. So oftentimes, when people hear three to four months, that seems like a really long time, but when you think about posting for three to four weeks and then having all of those, that's really where the majority of the time comes in. Once you've got down and you have a final candidate, we would want to do references and a background check. There is a required background check specific to the criminal justice information system that's required for the municipal court judge, so we would need to do that. And those steps would also need to be completed for a direct appoint as well. And then lastly, finalize a job offer. That's the end goal. So that's really quick, high level of what that process would look like, and I think I'll turn it back over to the mayor as I'm really looking for direction on if you do want to pursue a code amendment and that would provide you with the flexibility for how you would want to.
Okay, I have Mike already in the queue. Claire, anybody else ready? Chris, Alan? Okay, take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. How much would it cost, and thank you, by the way, for that presentation, how much would it cost in external hard soft costs, internal employee time roughly, more to do the extensive search you've just outlined versus us appointing and hiring Judge Gill? How much money are we talking about?
Ballpark money. I don't know if I could answer off the top of your head.
Rough guess.
Normally, around hours that we would be putting into it. A staff, staff would probably be committed to 40 to 80 hours of our time, but then it would also require the time of council, it would require the time of panel members, right, to be coming, coming for interviews, folks to screen. So it could, it would be a significant cost. It wouldn't be as much as what you would do for.
John, any idea what that would roughly cost?
You know, I think it's, you're talking, you know, it could be easily $20,000 or $25,000, and the reason why I say that is, is when we go out for a recruitment and have a firm that we hire, oftentimes, that can cost $20,000 or $25,000. They do a lot of the same work. Our staff still does some work, so it's, it could be in that mag, I wouldn't be surprised if that, if that magnitude is in the difference.
I ask that question because I spent some time talking with Judge Allen and meeting with Judge Gill myself, and I'm perfectly ready to hire him. This is just my personal opinion, and save the taxpayers the money personally, because I know what kind of extraordinary job he's done. So I don't know how my colleagues feel, but that's how I feel. And I, I don't, you know, know where we land. I'm happy to go with that. I like the system that we have, but I don't know that I feel all that strongly about the differences until I'm, you know, learn that there's some significant difference about having the judge as an employee versus the contract basis. If I were to find that it was a significantly, you know, higher cost if it was, I don't know. Based on what I know at the moment, I don't see significant, anything about the difference that makes me feel strongly about it one way or another. But again, I think I'm ready to move on without an extensive hiring process personally, so, thank you.
Okay, Claire?
Well, Mike and I agree.
Awesome. Beautiful.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the information and packet. So, yeah, I guess I'll start with, with my opinion of Judge Gill. So I think, I believe we should do a direct appoint of Judge Gill with an interview conducted by this body so that everyone can have the benefit of learning from him why he's the best candidate, but I do believe right now, our interim judge will, even if we did a full bore recruitment and hiring process, I believe he is the best candidate for the job. So I actually had an opportunity to attend the Community Justice Court Conference in Birmingham with Judge Gill, and that's the Center for Court Innovation, which really fostered and created the community court system that's now spreading across the country. And so I got to interact with Judge Gill there and Judge Allen when he was still our chief judge at that conference, and, you know, as outlined in the letter that Judge Allen shared with us, Judge Gill really has a breadth of experience with our court. He's taken on various roles and responsibilities to improve the court, and I believe he is really dedicated to continuing the excellent work that Judge Allen started there. So while it's possible we might find somebody else who warrants due consideration, I really find it highly unlikely, so I would urge us to consider the direct appoint process. I'm inclined to move us towards the, having him be a counsel, having that position be a council employee rather than a contract employee. I just felt some awkwardness around the process with Judge Allen being an independent contractor, and I think maybe it's more symbolic than anything else, but there is something about having that relationship of an actual council employee as our municipal court judge. And I also met with Judge Gill recently and felt like one thing we could do, no matter who we hire into this position, is ask that person to come and give us more frequent updates, maybe twice a year, on the work of the municipal court beyond community court. There's a whole lot of stuff that that court is doing that's really important to our community and kind of hidden away, and so I think bringing that forward a little bit more about this important part of our city is one of the reasons I like that idea of creating that as a council hired position rather than an independent contractor.
Okay. All of it. All right, Chris?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I put a lot of faith in Judge Allen. I think he's worked very hard over literally decades to create a system that works very well and has a very high regard. I think his head is in the right place in terms of where justice can go and what it can do. So when he makes a recommendation around Judge Gill, I take it very seriously because he would not recommend somebody that he thought was going to break his system or not continue his system in the way that he feels it should be continued. And so I think that's, that's a very important consideration. And on, and on his recommendation, I have also sat down with Judge Gill and had a chance to talk with him and kind of get a sense of where he thinks this might be going and what his goals are and where he might see a court system try to go in the future. And I was extremely impressed with not only the ideas he has, but the organization that he would try to pursue in order to get there. So I think he has the chops to do the job. And so I would, I would be fine with a direct appoint system. I don't know if we would necessarily find a better candidate who understands our local judicial needs as well as he does, who's been sitting in the bench and knows how this system works, all the parts of how this system works. With regard to the employment of the judge, I believe this, the original system was set up in the 70s.
Yes.
When the population of Eugene was like 70,000 people or 80,000 people. And I think when you have a relatively small community, and I'll use 70,000 advisedly, but a small community, then the idea of using contract employees for certain functions makes absolute sense. But we're now a city of close to 170,000 people, which I think really means we need to look at making those kinds of functions more robust, more dedicated, and more secure in terms of their ability to operate. We did that with our city attorney system, and I think that has worked out great, never had to look back. I think that was a very smart idea, and I think we can do exactly the same thing with our municipal court presiding judge process. So I would actually say of the, of the ideas before us, I would absolutely support creating the job of a permanent employee presiding court judge who can then, you know, administer the rest of that system the way he needs to administer it, similar to the way our auditor does or our city attorney does. But I think having them be a city employee would help in a number of ways, not the least of which is, the current contract specifies a certain work routine, a number of hours, which I know Judge Allen routinely violated, which technically is a violation, but he was doing it out of the goodness of his heart to do the best thing. I don't want to put a judge in that kind of position where they know what they need to do, but their contract constrains them. I'd like to just remove that constraint and let them be an employee to do the best job they can.
Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I too think that the judge should be a council employee. I think we should pursue that path. I don't, and I had a specific question about the job description. I don't, and I had a specific question about the job description. On page three, it says training and experience, the fourth segment, desired but not required as experience in community court. I'm wondering why that, I mean, that's a hallmark of what the judge does and a huge part of what we see is the workings of our court. I'm wondering why that isn't a requirement to be experienced in community court as opposed to just the way that it's done here.
As just a desire?
Yeah, right.
I think that that's a good piece of feedback that we could look at. Yeah, I think that when we had originally looked at this, we weren't sure if there were other areas that had worked in more of like a drug court, so not necessarily a community court, but a drug court could easily transfer over. And so we didn't want to limit ourselves on somebody who had maybe had that experience, but not necessarily a community court, if that makes sense. So we would still be looking for someone with that same set of problem-solving skills in a court area, but that is a good piece of feedback.
Yeah, in that case, I'd say experience in community court or other similar types of courts.
Yep, as required.
I'd rather see that as a requirement as opposed to desired but not required. Makes sense to me. I don't know, I don't know Judge Gill. I haven't met him. And, but I, so I necessarily lean towards an open recruitment, on part because it's just good public policy, it's more transparent, and I don't believe the cost should be a factor in this. If Judge Allen is any metric, this person might be here for, how long was Judge Allen the judge? Like 20 something years? 27 years or something like that? So amortize that over years of service and it's, it doesn't make any difference. On the other hand, Judge Allen's recommendation is very important to me in ways heavily in my mind, but I am leaning towards wanting to do an open recruitment. And like you said, the requirements here are you have to have Oregon experience, you have to have Oregon State Bar, and you have to have Oregon understanding of the judicial codes and all the municipal codes. So it's going to necessarily be a limited pool. It's not necessarily going to be a nationwide search. It's really, for all practical purposes, really an Oregon search if we went out. And would you, would you think this would garner a large pool of applicants or a narrow pool of applicants?
I think it could likely garner a smaller pool of applicants. I think when you look across Oregon, there's a mixed bag of folks that are either contract or employee judges. I think a good portion of them are contract judges. They work part-time. They like to set their hours. I don't know if we were posting it as an employee, if they would be interested in coming on board for that. But I do think the opportunity to come to Eugene and work in our community court could draw folks who are really interested in that specific type of work. So I think it would be interesting to see what we would get, yeah.
Okay, Emily?
Thank you. So we could just decide to hire Judge Gill. We don't have to put it out like an RFP for buildings and stuff?
If we were going to direct appoint, yes. If we decide, if you all decided to go with a code amendment to make the position an employee position, then yes, we could just direct appoint.
After an interview?
Yeah, you could interview and then direct appoint.
Or not.
Right.
You would not need to send out an RFP for all of that.
That's what I'm trying to clear up. So many things, you know, but to be fair, we have to ask, even if we already know what we want. And in this case, I already know what we want, I want, I don't know what you want. I met with Judge Gill for quite a while last week, and we talked about many things. And I was incredibly impressed, both with his knowledge and his experience, but the love he has for this job, you know, this is what he wants to be doing. And I think that he's doing a great job. There's just the excitement he has for it and all the experience. Of course, we should have an interview, but I'm really excited to hear that we could just decide to hire him and not have to go through a much larger process. And I'm not saying he's the only judge that would ever fit, but I'm really glad that he's here and I'd like to keep working with him. So I'm all for bringing the judge in as an employee, and I'd love to hire Judge Gill. Thank you.
Betty?
Who appointed Judge Allen?
The council.
Council? Forever? When? Long ago?
I remember this.
But is it forever?
It's been a long time, yeah. I would have to look back in my notes. I think it was 94.
I don't remember deciding to reappoint at any point. I remember having an evaluation, but.
We have. We renewed his contract.
Yeah, so he was originally appointed in 1994, and then you all would have renewed his contract.
It's almost automatic that it goes on and on. And do we not need to open it for, to let other people apply if we decide to appoint someone?
No, you would not need to with a direct appoint.
We could just appoint someone. And how long was the term?
Well, with an employee, if you went with an employee, they would have a probationary period, and then after that, they would be considered a regular employee. So other than if there was cause to terminate that employment relationship, then it's an ongoing employment relationship.
And would we do this?
What I'd also say is, just like myself and Mark and the judge, all three of us worked directly for the council. So the council really at any time could choose whether or not you continue to employ us. And so that really is your call.
So it seems that the majority want, I don't even know this, Judge, but if the majority wants to appoint him, do we still interview him?
Whatever we decide.
It sounds like the majority of folks would want to do that. I think it's a good idea for you to interview, especially for those of you who haven't had the chance to meet with him.
I'm inclined to think if there are other people who would like the job, that they should have the chance to apply. But that's, and have an interview, but I don't know.
Greg?
Yeah, I'll take you back a ways. I remember when Judge Allen got appointed because we had some significant issues with municipal court before he was appointed. And I was an officer in NAACP at the time. And since Judge Allen was appointed, we haven't had those issues. So, you know, I strongly support, you know, Judge Allen's recommendation based on his record. I don't know Judge Gill, but, you know, I trust Judge Allen's, you know, view on this. And I think that he should, you know, the municipal court judge should be an employee of the council.
I have a couple of folks asking for a second round, but I just want to make sure I have this sequence clear. We actually have two decisions here. The first decision is whether we want to make a code amendment and have a salaried position as opposed to a contractor. And then the second decision would be, do we want to have a direct appoint? That's correct. Okay, just wanting to be clear that we're clear. All right, so I have Mike and then Claire for the second round.
Thank you, Mayor, counting around the table and knowing what I'd like to see happen. I move to direct the manager, to have human resources come back to council with, one, and the city attorney to code language for the sake of, I got it, I know what I want to do, for the code language to make the city attorney an employee.
City judge.
City judge, sorry. I looked right at her and said city attorney. The code language necessary for review and public hearing to make the judge a council employee. And number two, to come back to us with an appropriate date for an interview with Judge Gill to consider the possibility of direct appointment of him.
Second.
So can I ask a question and clarification? You have as attachment A in your packet, language that would amend the code to provide the option of making the presiding judge a council employee. So.
Then I, then I alter my motion to bring that to a public, that language that is in our AIS, bring back for a public hearing.
As soon as possible.
Attachment A.
Attachment A.
Is that acceptable to the second?
Second accepts.
And then to schedule, as soon as is practical for our agenda, an interview with Judge Gill with the thought towards a direct appointment.
Okay, second. Any other questions? Clarification, Allen?
Could those be sequential?
I'm sorry.
So go through the process of modifying the code to make an employee, and then, once that's complete, then you would have the interview with Judge Gill to see if you want to do a direct appoint?
So he knows what he's doing, yeah.
Correct, so he knows whether he's.
Yes.
So, sorry, I skipped over Claire.
That's all right. So, yeah, so I think an interview is obviously important, and I do actually think an interview as a work session would provide a great deal of transparency. The public would get to see Judge Gill interact with the council and answer our questions. And we could solicit our constituents on questions they might want us to ask him. And I really think Emily's comment speaks to one of the strongest reasons that I support doing the direct appoint. While it might be nice to do a full recruitment and have a bunch of people, you know, solicit us for this position, I just don't think they are going to be able to match the dedication that Judge Gill has shown already to this community and to this city. And other candidates will be lacking that by just virtue of the experience and position he's been in and what he's done actually in that role. So, and I frankly don't think we have an obligation to provide other people with the opportunity to apply for the job. We have an excellent candidate who has demonstrated his dedication to the community. I think we should interview him. If we are not in agreement after that interview that he's not the right, possibly the best candidate, then we could reverse course and do a full recruitment.
Mike, one more comment?
Yeah, that last part was the reason I used the language that I did. If anybody has any concerns, it's easy enough after that work session to say, we appreciate getting to know you in that way. We want to open this up and get some more thoughts, because by then, maybe someone in the community would say, well, our courts need to move in this direction instead. But I agree with the first part of what you said, that he's invested and has helped create some of the key parts of what are currently the admirable parts of our system. So no one's going to know them better certainly than he, and I'm happy with that.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Oh, Betty?
I'm in a minority, obviously, and it's not that I object to this person at all. I don't know that. But I don't think it's the right way to do it. I think there could be someone else who has been in the court who has different ideas. And I don't like hiring someone without giving other people a chance. But I'm obviously in the minority here. I think someone else may have been around just as long and think, I think we should do something differently and would like to apply and wouldn't get the job, obviously. So I don't, I just don't like doing it this way.
Okay, Allen?
Just to clarify my vote, I agree with Betty. I think that should be an open process. But at this point, an open process would probably be kind of a sham, because everybody's, the majority of council has said that they want to direct appoint Judge Gill, so I'm not going to stand in the way of that.
Yes.
And then just one other point of clarity. If you do go forward with a public hearing for the code amendment, the other thing that we would likely want to do prior to the interview is get agreement and finalize on the job description as well as the salary. So that could be something that I would either come back to.
That was part of my motion.
Okay, okay, to come back. Great.
Okay, everybody ready? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed, one. The process. Process, appreciate that. Manager?
I just want to make sure, clarification. So we will post that proposed ordinance for a public hearing, move it to a public hearing. Then we will schedule a work session where you have an opportunity to take action on that particular ordinance. And then we would have the interview after those two things are already accomplished. So that's a sequence of events that will, and then the job description will play in there.
Right into that.
Yeah, play into that where we're in the right places.
Right, thank you, yes. That's what we're all agreeing to. Thank you very much. Excellent, very helpful and moving us along. And so our final order of business in this meeting, the parking update.
I'll ask Jeff to come up to the table and as he does, I just wanted to, just a couple of thoughts or comments as we go through this. Parking in my 30 years is one of those things like weeds that you're just, there's always conversation around it. And so, as you know, we've put out some changes via administrative order, and as I mentioned to you recently, that actually falls within the purview of the city manager, it just does. And so the decision rests with me, but because this is an important issue, we have had a lot of community input into that, it is appropriate for you to also provide your perspectives that we will then also consider as we, before issuing a final order. And so that's part of what we want to do, and I can let Jeff introduce the topic, and then we'd like to hear your thoughts.
Good evening. I was trying to figure out what kind of weed I am.
Would you like suggestions on the other?
We could do a naming convention here. So, good evening, my name is Jeff Peachtree. I'm the City of Eugene's parking manager, and I was reflecting back. I've been in the position for over 12 years, and I was looking at the register guard picture of the great snowstorm of '69. And I was trying to figure out landmarks for downtown. I wasn't here in '69, but I couldn't figure out where things were. And I realized that was in '69 is when we started building the Overpark parking garage, the downtown business district built this garage.
Was right on the right in that picture.
Was it right there? Yeah, so I was trying to figure things, I was looking for the Citizens Building, I was looking for the U.S. Bank Building, I was looking for the Holt Center, LTD. None of that was there. And so part of what I want to share quickly here, then provide, listen and provide, hear your feedback, the City of Eugene's Municipal Parking Service is truly unique across the country. We're recognized for being innovative, community-oriented, and progressive in how we do our parking. One of the things that really makes us unique is that the municipal parking program, you've charged me with managing the off-street parking system, which is the parking garages and service lots. You've also charged me with managing the on-street system, so campus, downtown, and across the entire City of Eugene, our officers rotate through. All that is accounted for in the Parking Enterprise Fund, which is unique across the country, that everything is in that area. Many municipalities house that in Public Works, they house it in the Road Fund, they house it in the General Fund and other areas, and Police Department. And the final thing that makes it unique is that we provide, we get no subsidies from the General Fund or Road Fund or Transportation Fund. The Parking Fund actually transfers money back to the General Fund for police services. So it's truly unique in how we have an opportunity here to manage with the community. And I know at some point, someone asked me about Haddon Avenue and where we are in that neighborhood livability. So there's things that the parking program is asked to do that doesn't happen in every community. So I do appreciate the fun projects that we do. So we do have a rate increase here. Part of the proposal that we're seeking feedback on are rate increases to the off-street monthly permits, the off-street daily parking, the off-street hourly, the on-street hourly, both downtown and campus. As we've walked through this proposed admin order, we have sent out thousands of postcards, thousands of emails, we have A-frames in every garage, have City of Eugene's first Reddit account as we engage its social media on Reddit, Eugene parking rates, both campus and downtown. May not be the first, but it was a different way to engage the community. We've also had feedback from Downtown Eugene Merchants, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Eugene Neighborhood Association, and Downtown Eugene Incorporated on this proposed rate increase. So as we go through this feedback, had about 125 written emails come back, done presentations, the printed and the TV spots have generated more feedback. So the question is, why are we doing this? And there's a couple of reasons why we're looking at this increase is, one is, this is a book that sits at my desk. It's $10 million of deferred maintenance in our parking structures. And we're working through that. Last year, we wanted to show value for the money that our customers are paying, and we retrofitted all the lights to LED lights. So there's some energy savings, carbon emissions reductions, but also we found our customers want, in our survey from last year, they want a safe, brightly lit, clean environment or downtown. And so that is identified, and we're working through that piece. Other pieces were a deep cleaning of parking garages. The Overpark was built in 1969, and we cleaned it for the first time a year or two ago. It was pretty dirty. It was pretty dirty. As we work through here, we've replaced concrete stairways in garages. If we don't replace those stairs, the entire garage shuts down and we can't use that garage. Going forward, our promise to our customers in this calendar year is, one of the biggest items is replacing the elevators. I'm sure no one here has received a complaint about the elevators not working in a parking garage, but there was a day that seven of our eight elevators were broken. And if all those elevators are broken, the garages don't function. And we are personally driving customers up to the top of the garage, trying to meet our ADA requirements and just trying to meet downtown. We also have a couple of other projects that are large, deck overlay projects, think about replacing a roof in multiple levels of your house. Those are in millions of dollars and that's far along overdue on this project. So those are some commitments that we're making. The other parts of the rate increase, we're going to continue funding for police services. We transfer $838,000 each year to the General Fund for police services. We've also incorporated the on-street downtown meter rate increase of 15 cents, funds the downtown ambassadors. It's a one-for-one funding mechanism right there. And then we also have a hosted bathroom in the Overpark garage and day storage on what we call the 1060 Olive Lot. These are all things that the Parking Fund is supporting. So I can go on and on about parking, but part of the value that we have is we've adopted this idea from Donald Shoup, a UCLA professor, who talks about if you have a paid system, you pay for the cost of the program, you put the money back into the infrastructure in the community. So we have with capital projects about a $7.5 million budget. We put a lot back into the community and we've spent off about $60,000 to fund the mural program, found, funded Eugene Parade, small sponsorships, light up downtown, and a few other smaller projects of that $7.5 million. So, here for questions?
Great. Thank you very much. I already have two in the queue, Betty and then Mike and Claire. Okay.
So you get rid of the two who think it should be free parking at the, all at once. As you know, I think that on-street parking should be free, that we should not be, that we should tear out all the meters. I'm very concerned about the raise in rates. And I don't think, when, anytime we get told that you can make comments on something, it's already been decided. I don't think there's a chance that it will be changed. But I do think it's wrong to raise the rates and I think it's wrong to charge for on-street parking. The places that have really healthy downtowns have free parking, like Corvallis and Salem, for example. And there's no upkeep for the meters or cost for buying the meters or, I know you already bought them, but I know, it's all right to charge for the Overpark. I don't think the rate should be changed, though. I've had many comments and quite a few emails from people who say they really can't afford it. They are people, many of them work for senior and disabled services. And many of them do not live in Eugene. So they can't just walk there or ride a bicycle to get to work. And they are not making that much money. I think, I really believe that downtown belongs to the whole community and it doesn't just belong to the merchants downtown. It, we will, if you walk around downtown now, as I do now and then, you will find a lot of empty spaces already. And I think the more expensive we make it to come downtown, the more likely people are to not come again. So that's one thing, one bad effect. Another bad effect is that the people who don't make much money will have to pay a bigger portion of their salary to park and something they can't afford. I don't think the parking fees should be supporting general services. We should, the things that are good, that help everybody should be paid for out of the General Fund. We should find another way to support that rather than on the backs of people who have to pay to park. We're not going to cause people not to drive by charging them more. Some people, they, there are places where people do not, could not take buses, there are people, places where people have really poor bus service and they just can't shift to buses. And I'm very disappointed that we're raising the rates without, we say you can make a comment, but that doesn't do any good. So, that's it. Mike? That's it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Betty just said parking should be free. I agree with her to the general public. But let's be honest, parking's not free. That's nonsense. That's silly. Of course it's not. Costs money. Jeff's got a big book there, says it costs $10 million. Okay? But to draw the nexus that that means we ought to charge the public regularly and on an increasing basis more money is not made because you have a big book, any more than we should charge the public every time a police officer shows up. That's a service that we provide as a city that we think is important for our citizens to benefit from, and it serves larger goals, a safe community. We don't charge them every time the fire department shows up because we believe that having our homes not burned down and then not endanger our neighbors is a good thing that the city ought to pay for. I believe that parking, although it costs money, is a value that supports the other important goals we have around downtown. Now, I agree we ought to have free on-street parking because I think that supports the notion of people interacting with our downtown more intelligently, but much more important than that. We shouldn't be making it harder on the people who have to have their cars downtown. We shouldn't be trying to create social goal realities of forcing people out of their cars for those folks especially who have no choice but to make their income in doing so. We have clustered intentionally a lot of our social service agencies in the downtown core. And there are many, many of them, and I know there's some folks here tonight who do this, who have to be able to go out and see people in the community and serve them that are homebound, and they have to use their cars to do it. And they have to park downtown to get to their office and to their work, and then they have to go and serve other members of the community. You're making it harder and much more expensive on people who can least afford to pay for it. It's not supporting the larger goals. That's why, obviously, it costs money. So do the police. But we value them and we figure out other means to finance them. The general public doesn't care how we do, what our accounting system is for parking. They don't care. And frankly, I don't really either. It's wonderful that we have the fund and that it makes contributions back. I agree it shouldn't. I want to know specifically, what's the council action necessary to suspend this administrative action? Is it by motion?
You don't have the authority to do that.
Okay, well, that's my question. Do we have any, do we have any mechanism at all by which we might alter the outcome or the price of parking?
No. You can amend your code. I mean, your policymaking document is in the code, so you...
Is there no manner by which council has, for, I'm going to use the wrong words here probably, but, oh, I'm running out of time. Can I, oh?
Yep.
Just finish?
Go ahead and finish, yeah.
Okay. When we create an LID, there's an opportunity for the neighbors to remonstrate and say, "No, we don't like that." Is there a similar mechanism for council when there's an administrative action to say, "We want to review that"?
Not unless it's specifically included in your code. And for parking fees, there's not. For example, for stormwater fees, there's actually a mechanism built into the code that allows for you to kind of pull it up for review by the council. Similarly, there's one for airport fees. And those are the two that have a code-established process to do that. There isn't one in your code for any of the fees. It is just through 2.019, there is a delegated authority to the city manager to adopt those fees. So without any other specific provision to call it up to you, which there isn't for this type of fee.
Second round, please, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Claire?
Thank you. So I wanted to ask particularly about, you know, we received a number of emails about folks, and a couple of councilors reference this, who work for Land Council of Government, particularly senior and disabled services, and said that the block parking permit was being eliminated. It wasn't clear to me if that was because of something we were doing, which might be raising the rates, or a decision that ElCog had made, and I didn't know if that is something you can shine some light on.
Yeah, the bulk permit program is what it's called. And we set it up in the, let's see, when we brought Symantec downtown. It was essentially a 10%, 20%, up to 30% discount on permits for large employers downtown that buy more than 25 or 50 permits. They prepay 12 months and then we distribute the permits over the next 12 months. As part of this proposal, we are proposing deleting the bulk permit admin process here because our garages are full. We're at capacity. We have waiting lists. The use of that tool for an economic development incentive for large employers, we didn't feel it was warranted anymore, so we proposed to take it out of the rate structure. ElCog was, or is, they were through last fall, they purchased the bulk permits and then they resold the monthly permits to their staff downtown. And I've been in a conversation with Brenda Wilson, their executive director, on how to mitigate the impact to their employees. The Overpark garage, which we talked about earlier, it's the largest parking garage in downtown. It's the highest-used parking garage, and it's the busiest and most expensive parking garage downtown. So the 125 ElCog employees, they have a skybridge to that garage. They're parked right next door to that. So Brenda and I are working through options to try to mitigate the impact to ElCog employees.
So you are actively looking for a way to not increase the burden on those senior and disabled service employees in terms of having to bring their cars downtown? Because I think Counselor Clark may be right, that they need to use those to go out and do their work. So that was a bit of a rhetorical question, but...
No, that's correct. Brenda has several ideas in play, including more telecommuting options, including the state motor pool, she has a list of options we're working through. We are also looking forward, because all of our garages are full, we cannot handle new businesses locating downtown that want parking right now.
And giving them that bulk permit.
Right. Or in general, right now, we have waiting lists on every garage. So if you hired one person and you wanted to park in a garage tomorrow, you're on a waiting list until that position, that place frees up over the next year or two.
Right. Well, that's encouraging because I was very concerned about those emails we were getting. And I will say that in years past, it was many years ago now, long before there was an MX with really reliable service. I worked downtown. I did not earn very much money. And I would definitely have to come up with strategies to figure out how to get to my job without driving my car downtown and paying for parking. And using transit was one of those. Parking on the outskirts of the downtown and walking was another one. Right now, we've got several parking rides located throughout town where folks can get on the MX or a bus and come downtown. And so folks who don't have to use their car during the day for work, those are actually very viable strategies for folks who are more able-bodied to avoid paying a parking fee. So I don't believe we are creating a huge onerous burden on employees downtown. But there is some cost and there is some effect, and we need to be mindful of that. So I'm grateful to hear that there is some work being done to try to address that very specific problem for the senior and disabled services employees.
Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Jeff, for answering my questions via email this last week. I really appreciated that. You mentioned that you're getting a lot of comments, it sounds like. And I'm wondering if any of them have made you go back and make any, you're thinking about any adjustments or what impact that has had?
Thinking, the campus, campus district, which I think we're going to talk about, that's an area that, I'm just thinking about the options that we have out there. The way that the campus parking district is set up was created in 2010 when the arena came onboard and with different mix of businesses, different uses. So we're kind of working through the ideas and the options that are in the campus area.
Oh, that's great. Because I know you did get some feedback from the campus folks.
Yes, we did, yeah.
It's great to hear that that is having an effect. So you mentioned you had $10 million of deferred maintenance. And then you also mentioned some other programs that you sponsor, I guess, you're not fully paying for them. But I'm wondering how much of your funds go to those programs approximately?
$60,000 a share.
$60,000. And do you feel like that's a good use of your money?
I think part of the value of how do you make parking fun in some ways, right? So you can provide a clean, safe experience in our parking garages. We can fund the ambassadors, which we have received feedback that they're part of that fun experience. The other part is we have brought, part of the planning for the downtown core, parking has played a role in helping that come back. And so in our mind, the event, Holt Center events, the revenue that we receive from that, we put back into the mural program. The other projects we sponsor more of, it's a sponsorship, but it's a traffic control plan to shut down the streets for things that happen in the core of downtown, things that parking knows how to do, and we do it well, and we help on those ways. So those are sponsorships that bring more people downtown.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. I also wanted to say, I spend a lot of time in Corvallis, and yes, you don't have to pay for parking, but I would gladly pay to actually find a spot when I'm driving around Corvallis downtown, trying to find a spot. It's horrible. So I appreciate we have more access downtown right now in our own city. And thank you so much.
Alan?
Yeah, Mike had it right. There is no such thing as free parking. Parking is actually very expensive. And since it's all General Fund that would fund this and it would be zero sum, we could, I guess we could cut police and fire in the library to pay for parking, but I don't think that's a very good choice. Is there any data, Jeff, on the impact of fees for parking in downtown areas on the businesses? Analysis that you've seen?
For Eugene or...
And for Eugene?
They're all over the place. So in terms of the analysis, yes, every downtown is different. We look at Fort Collins compared to Corvallis, compared to Salem, compared to Springfield, Eugene, Portland, everything is unique. What we do know in downtown Eugene is that we have a parking exempt zone, which we encourage lot line to lot line development and a removal of surface lots. We have very narrow streets that encourages parallel parking on the streets, more pedestrian friendly environment. And then we build garages around the core. And I think the, what we seek more is feedback from the downtown businesses about what the rate should be, how to use the money, the investments we make. And so we err more on that local community fabric than national studies on, because they're variable.
It was actually the merchants that came to us and said, "Get rid of this free parking program and reinstall the meters because it didn't work." It ended up being play parking program. One other point is that charging for parking is also consistent with the climate recovery ordinance by encouraging alternative or carbon options. Two questions. One is options on the campus parking district. You were, you said we're going to talk about it? Here's your chance. What are...
You know, the, I think we all received a letter from the West University Business District, and part of that conversation was about the meter time limits. Ironically, the 45-minute, 46-minute time limits were set by the business districts in 2010. So we prefer higher times and we'll reach back out to them. And yes, we can make that change. Some of the questions are around the, you know, charging 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in that district. We're right there with the district, so we will reach back out to make the needs. Part of the, as the arena came onboard and the events on campus, and the University of Oregon, 20,000 people a day to a very small area, we're trying to figure out how to make sure we create opportunities for people to park and turn over in that area. And so the system that we have in place reflects something in the work we did a while ago and we need to reengage that. So we're going, I'll be going back out, having a conversation with them and trying to figure out what is the right solution for them.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I appreciate the changes that have occurred in the arena parking district and especially some of the areas that are one hour because that was, that was right next to the arena. That was becoming untenable for a lot of the neighbors. The last question I had relates to, and the one map I really actually wanted to see was, where the heck are all these residential zones? These permit zones, A through J? I know where J is because I live in it, but...
A's at the bottom. A's at the bottom, B and C are on the west side here. On that map.
Oh, they're all on this, in the campus?
They're all in the, most somewhere in the campus district, correct.
Oh, okay. So they're all within this area. Oh, within that map. Okay. Thank you. Mayor?
Okay. Chris, then Emily, then Greg.
Thank you. Just, I think I made notes for three quick points. First one, around the question on ElCog, senior and disability services. Those folks have a huge caseload of folks that are either vulnerable or housebound, and so they may have to get in their cars and travel. and so they may have to get in their cars and travel two or three times a day. So they really need access to their cars. And since their work impacts thousands of other folks in the community, whatever we could do to work out a, an accommodation for them, I think would be extremely important. It's, it's a ripple effect that I think is very significant, and so, um, whatever it is you choose to do, I'm perfectly fine with carving out exceptions for, for that group who, who need their cars and who travel frequently to visit vulnerable people. Can you remind me again the amount of money that the parking fund transfers into the general fund?
Uh, for police services, $838,000.
Okay. Um, I know we're working on revenue options for public safety, and I know that the, the current $800,000 is, is not accommodated in that thinking, um, but I'm wondering if there's ways we can maybe, uh, look at, I'm not talking about the entire, but ways we can maybe do some, some shaping, some looking at that, so we may not have to make quite such a large transfer and, and pick that money up some other way. I don't know what that may, may be right now, but I'm, I'm very willing to look at what we might do, particularly as we craft an entire public safety, community safety package. There may be some flexibility within that. And if we do, uh, find some ways to do it, um, we may be able to revisit this, this fee question, and maybe we don't have to raise the fees so much, or maybe we don't have to do, uh, quite what we're talking about doing now. I, I don't know. It's up to you, but I'm just putting, planting the idea that if we don't have to make as much of a transfer, maybe we don't have to raise fees as much. Just, it's an idea. And then the last question I had was around, um, the current parking capacity, uh, in, in downtown specifically. Is there a, uh, a surplus of paid parking spaces? Can people drive to downtown and find a parking place downtown with a meter on it relatively easily?
It's full. I think the, you know, what I didn't get into is, right now, the downtown business community and, you know, kind of my fear going forward is that we can't accommodate new businesses downtown. So, uh, new companies, new employees, uh, new hires, uh, we are absolutely at capacity in our parking garages for employees. And the, uh, the on-street, we have, we have some circulation and turnover on the street. Uh, as we move forward with development from here to the riverfront and to the Fifth Street District Market, uh, it's getting tighter and tighter and tighter, and our wait lists are longer and longer and longer.
But in terms of general, uh, let's, let's call it retail parking. Are you sensing, or do you have any information that would say, because we charge for parking downtown, um, it's, it's created a, um, an excess of spaces? In other words, nobody's parking downtown, so therefore, all these spaces with parking meters on them are going empty because nobody wants to pay the parking fee?
I can't answer that question. What I can answer, uh, we do see people using the meters, they're using it, um, much more than they did before 2010 on the street. Uh, one of the garages I look at is the Overpark, because of the ElCog question, because we're full every day by 9:30, the Overpark is full, uh, which means if employees leave that garage and they come back to park, they have nowhere to park in the garage and they come back with that permit. As I look through the data of just one garage downtown, one slice, uh, one of the questions I asked myself is, why is this garage so full so fast in the last year? Part of that is just the number of daily and hourly parkers that are parking in our garages. So we have seen a dramatic increase of more people visiting downtown and doing business downtown, uh, in our parking structures, taking up some of that demand that we have before, for permit spaces.
So, so is it possible, and you may not have the answer to this, is it possible that part of the problem we're having downtown is not because it's paid or unpaid, there just isn't enough space?
I think it feels like there's not enough space right now. It absolutely does. And as we go through more development downtown, there's not enough space.
So if we got rid of the paid parking system, let's say on the streets, that wouldn't necessarily resolve the problem with not enough space?
We need to figure out how to move people around the-
I would just say, no, that doesn't resolve the issue, because, uh, you still have the same numbers of people competing for the same numbers of spaces, and the, and the demand outstrips the supply. And so whether it's paid or not paid, I don't think it resolves the issue.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm trying to get my head around, is that if I want to take positive steps to solve a problem, is it that it's paid parking or that there's not enough spaces? And it sounds like from a lot of these issues that are going on, we need to be able to provide greater capacity, more places to park. And paying is a, is not the issue here. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we, I have two councilors waiting for their first round, I have two more councilors waiting for a second round. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting by 10 minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8? Okay, take it away, Emily.
Thank you. There's not enough parking downtown, it's too full. You can't have more parking. So it seems to me the obvious thing to do is raise the rates more. John, you're not doing enough. We need revenue. I'm serious, you know? We have the CRO, we need less cars downtown, all the spaces are full, there's no places for new spaces. If we raise the rates even more, people will carpool more, people will ride their bikes more. I think, as always, that we should have free buses, and that would make it easier to get downtown. I would love to see a little trolley downtown. Other cities have done it, and it's been suggested here in the past. Thank you, Bonnie. Um, so I, I, I grew up, long, long, long time ago, we had to put coins in the, in the meter to park, so it's not, you know, alien to me that parking is a service that you do have to pay for. When I go to Portland, which I never do, because I have to pay to park there, so I stay home. But I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Betty and Mike, I would love to have free lots of things, but I think this actually is a place where we're not charging enough, because I'm on a team to look for ways to raise money for public safety, and if parking is giving some of the money to public safety, I want it. I want some more. So, uh, don't listen to those naysayers, John. I am curious as to why it's $100 a month to park by the library and the train station, the others are like 60.
The, so by the library is 1060 Olive, we're leasing a lot from the county, it used to be a former, uh, dry cleaner lot. We have a few people that want to purchase a permit there, but we don't want to sell a lot of permits there. And so it's the same with the train depot. Those lots are made for daily parking, quick turnover, customer service, uh, but we do have requests once in a while for parking in those locations.
Great, let's do more of that. Money, money, money. Where are all the cars going to go? We don't have enough space. Make it more expensive. I know it's backwards, Betty and Mike, but that's where I'm going. Thank you, uh, very much, and let's get some free buses and let's raise some money. Thank you.
Okay, Greg.
Um, remind me, uh, what, the cost to develop a, a new parking space in a parking structure is, what, $65,000 to $70,000 per space?
It's probably on the high end, $50,000, we could round to.
And its surface is about $35,000 or so?
Yeah, for public provision, if we build it.
And it, 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 just taking away the, the backlog in maintenance, how much does it cost the city per year to maintain a parking space?
Can I do the math real quick? I know that, uh, so there's different types of maintenance, so if we're just talking about operations, cleaning, sweeping, minor repairs, uh-
Repaving.
Uh, we don't do much of that, that's what part of that is. The, um, uh, our maintenance log is about 1.3 million, we have about 2,500 parking spaces. Hope someone has a calculator on their phone, I don't have it with me. Is that what it is?
Five, what, 500? 2,500? How much?
1.3 million.
500 per space per year?
So it's a significant amount of money to maintain those, those parking spaces. So we, we, we do need to, we do need to charge for parking. The second thing that, um, that, that I want to kind of go over too is that with the, um, OBE development, how many, uh, parking spaces are going to be in that development? And are they going to be available to the, to the pu, general public? Are they going to be reserved for people in that development?
I'm not tracking an exact answer, but it is a private development that would, the use there would be for the, uh, the customers of that development. It's not a county or city public parking.
Wouldn't be open to-
Correct. Doesn't mean they won't be there, but it's there to serve the development.
What is the long-range outlook in terms of, um, the need for additional parking balanced against what our goals are with our CRO? And are we looking to, uh, develop or add more parking, new parking spaces, other than the one I just mentioned? Or are we looking to do other strategies?
The future of parking and transportation with, uh, the city of Seattle's parking department changed their name to curbside management, because people are not owning cars anymore, they're not driving, they're using Uber and Lyft, they're autonomous vehicles. The financial markets are pricing parking garages as a riskier investment than general public buildings. So the future is, uh, unclear right now in our industry. Our strategy in Eugene, where we have our, our CRO, we have a great transportation system, we have a lot of opportunities around here, is to find those other strategies, and that's what we're embarking on this year also, that how do we figure out how to get people downtown, around downtown? Uh, we're working with LTD to do a transit, micro-transit in the downtown core. We're working at exterior park-and-rides, we're trying to find ways that people don't need to drive a solo vehicle downtown to park once and have it park all day.
So will we also be looking at, um, public-private partnerships with TNCs, um, and the, and the transit district to supplement that?
We're looking at a bunch of options, we're open to the options. I haven't explicitly sat down and looked at that option. We need to figure out a solution.
Okay, lightning round for our second-
Over 500 bucks a spot.
Mike, Mike and then Betty.
Thank you, Mayor. I would absolutely be making the motion to alter code to be able to have council have, uh, at least some input here as we do with stormwater and those other pieces, except that we don't have near the time to do that. But let's be real clear, at least four of us at this table talked about the importance of altering this plan to compensate for the reasonable need the senior and disabled services have to get in and out of their cars during the course of the day to serve an awful lot of people. And I agree. But here's the point, they're not the only ones. There's an awful lot of people downtown who have a need to get in and out of their cars during the course of a day in order for our downtown to work. This is not a small economic question, and we're not going to solve this today, and we're not going to come up with a good answer, and we're not going to add new code language. But I strongly suggest we have another work session to talk about this in more detail. It affects an awful lot of people. How many, how many emails did you get?
125.
Uh, this, did you, you solicited much response, but I'm asking, how many did you get that you didn't solicit?
I, I don't know.
I know I got dozens and dozens and dozens from people who are very angry for the same reason. I have to be able to have access to my ability to move around. Now, I'm not saying build 20 more parking garages, or that we have to, you know, as much as I'd like to make street-level parking free, I'm going to get parking garages to charge money. But we need more capacity, or we need to allow technology to alter and the difference in the way we manage and live with this for the sake of our own downtown's economic health. I, I really think this is not a small issue, and we ought to talk about it with another work session. So I'll put out a poll.
Betty?
Okay, if you look at what's really successful downtown, the Fifth Street Market area, there's free parking there, it is three hours, which is a, which is a reasonable amount of time. As for the amount of time, amount of space that is not used, all you have to do is look at Oak Street, there's some other streets too, where there are meters and nobody uses them, because there would not be time to park there and get downtown and do what you want to do. So they, they're just meters sitting there. So there's, that is space that people could be used, be using. As for, people always say, well, take MX. Well, a lot of us don't live anywhere near MX, I'd have to go five miles before I could take MX. And they say, share rides, that people don't necessarily live near other people who are going where they're going. Once, a few years ago, it's been long enough, I don't think anybody could identify the person, wasn't even the city manager, but, um, a person, a city employee was pretending he was sharing a ride to get a, of, less, to pay less for parking, and got caught and had a huge penalty. But everybody can't share rides, everybody can't walk to where they can go, to where, where they can get a place, and, well, I guess that's enough, we're out, we're out of time, but I, I do think that it's, it's a public service, and you just have to look at the places that are succeeding to see that the time, the time to leave your car is important, not everybody can take their cars with them every place.
So, thank you. Um, I think, um, I think as the manager introduced this topic, as weeds, they're always with us, and the parking conversation will continue to be with us, and so we look forward to the next chapter to discuss some of the things that have been brought up to the table today, and then, and whatever new comes along on the parking landscape. So thank you very much. We're adjourned until 7:30.